Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Gulf Shore City Council Rescheduled Work Session Meeting for September the 7th. This is the afternoon where we discuss the items that will be on next Monday's meeting that we'll be voting on. There's no voting tonight, but it's your opportunity to give us input, ask questions, and help us understand as we contemplate next week when we vote on these things. We'll have your input and your thoughts. So please don't be shy. Raise your hand on any time and we'll set up the microphone and tell us what you think. We'll begin with our work session or councilman discussion period, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Mayor, we have a lot to get to today. Let's get to it.
Okay. Lee, you're up with the Alvin's Island Conditional Use Permit Request.
Mike told me not to touch the microphone. I'm gonna keep my hands behind me. Mayor, Council, good afternoon. This is a request for Conditional Use Permit Approval to construct a seventeen-feet-long Great White Shark Structure at the main entrance to the Alvin's Island Store. In accordance with Article sixteen dash one F Novelty Architecture, the shark structure is considered novelty architecture and a conditional use permit is required. I think everyone is probably familiar with the location. It's at the intersection of Gulf Shores Parkway and Beach Boulevard, the northwestern corner. Just some images of the existing conditions. Now, these are kind of focused in on the location where the shark structure is proposed. They have some outdoor display area there now, but as you'll see in the site plan, this is proposed location for the proposed shark structure. So what is novelty architecture? The purple octopus is a pretty good example that illustrates what novelty architecture is. It is architecture in which buildings and other structures are given unusual shapes in whole or in part as a novelty for advertising, to draw attention to a site, for notoriety as a landmark, or simply due to the eccentricity of the owner. That's the definition directly from the zoning ordinance. The applicant request is for Conditional Use Permit Approval for this shark structure. It's surfing in a wave located in an elevated dry pool. You can see on the site plan here within that, the area that's currently used for display items. You can see the blue pool in plan view there with the shark at an angle. The shark structure is to be located in the plaza outside of the main entrance to the store. The Conditional Use Permit Application Requirements require a narrative where the applicant explains the reasoning for the request. And this originally went to the Planning Commission back in April and was deferred, tabled by the Planning Commission and later deferred by the applicant. And they were originally proposing a twenty-seven-feet-tall Great White Shark that was suspended from a marine pole. And due to the discussion at the Planning Commission meeting, the applicant modified their request to what is being proposed today. The applicant states that the structure will provide photograph opportunities outside of the entrance to the store. It will increase the area's appeal as a beach resort community and will provide a landmark tourist attraction for children and families. And you can see there a sketch of how that shark will sit within that wave pool in that parking area. So just a little bit of background, and these are all existing structures that would meet the definition of novelty architecture that exists today. These are all what, from a zoning standpoint, these are legally non-conforming structures. So they were in place prior to the adoption of the zoning ordinance back in 2009 that set different standards, area and dimensional requirements for development in this area. And also prior to the 2016 amendment that added novelty architecture and the CUP requirement for the approval of novelty architecture. So these are what we call grandfathered in. They can remain as long as those buildings are not substantially added on to or modified in a way that would increase their nonconformity. So they can exist until the buildings are redeveloped. And at that point, they would have to go through a similar process if they wanted to resurrect these pieces of novelty architecture. Article three dash four C outlines the standards of approval for a conditional use permit. And there are fourteen criteria that we as staff review these permit applications against in order to make a recommendation to the Planning Commission. So the Planning Commission considers all fourteen criteria, and I won't go into all those criteria like we did at the Planning Commission. But just to nutshell it for you all, the application fails to satisfy about half of those fourteen criteria. That doesn't mean that there's no standard that they have to meet seventy-five percent or eighty percent or ninety percent. There's no standard there. These are to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. It's just a point of information that when reviewing against those fourteen criteria, it satisfies about half of them. So we're gonna talk about a few of those factors that we analyzed. And at their June twenty-second meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to recommend disapproval to the council on this application. So one of the fourteen criteria is, and I'm not gonna dwell on this, but it is a proposed site development plan in accordance with the zoning ordinance. And it's not, there are several issues with the current site plan and the way that the shark is proposed in the location. And that current site plan does not meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance based on the architectural standards. If the shark is approved, then it will exceed the signage allowance for the site. So it's in conflict with the sign ordinance, the parking lot landscape standards. It's deficient today. It's over on its outdoor display of merchandise. And the dumpster location, we've been working with them for a while now to get those dumpsters out of the parking lot and move to the rear of the building where they were approved on the site plan. But today, they are where they're shown on that photograph. So it is substandard as far as the site plan is concerned. That's just one of the criteria that we have to look at for the conditional use permit. So is a site development plan compatible with the goals and stated plans of the city? And I'm gonna talk a little bit about three different plans that have been developed and approved and adopted for the city. The first is Envision Gulf Shores back in 2005. And then what followed the Envision Gulf Shores Plan was the rewrite of the zoning ordinance in 2009. And then, as you all are familiar with, the Vision 2025 Plan for Sustainability that was developed in 2014. So starting with the 2005 plan, and what's interesting is not much has changed. I mean, the city has had a solid vision for where we want to be in the future, especially in the walking district since 2005. We've just been working to implement the 2005 plan and then ultimately the Envision 2025 Plan. So this was a visionary plan for the community of Gulf Shores as the plan states. And the main question that the plan tries to answer is how do we make Gulf Shores a better place? And three of the results of that plan are recreate Gulf Place as the heart of Gulf Shores, create a walking district, and amend the zoning ordinance in order to make all of it happen. A lot of that's taken place. So Gulf Place Revitalization, one of the main goals of the vision or of the Envision Gulf Shores Plan was to redevelop the Gulf Place area, which Mayor, you and Council have gone to great lengths to put that into place. And also walking district improvements to create the walking district. An overlay was adopted with the 2009 zoning update. And as you all are probably aware, there are infrastructure improvements underway right now. We're gonna start on the east side here soon, if we haven't already, Mark. And this project includes upgraded stormwater, new streets, as well as paving existing streets, wider sidewalks, landscaping and street trees, and more on-street parking to serve the businesses and to incent some more development in the area as well. The third recommendation of the Envision Gulf Shores Plan was to update the zoning ordinance. So one piece of that update is architectural standards and primarily architectural standards for the walking district. And with the 2016 update, the Novelty Architecture CUP requirement, which we're talking about today, as well as standards for building placement, materials, height, and massing. So the zoning ordinance in the architectural standard states that individual buildings shall be related to each other in design, massing, materials, placement, and connections to provide a visually and physically integrated development. The proposed novelty architecture does not lend to a continuity of development or help integrate the development with surrounding architecture. If you think about the images that were shown earlier, they're all standalone. You know, they're intended to draw attention to an individual business rather than develop a continuity of development throughout this district. The zoning ordinance, just through implementation and looking at buildings that have either been planned or built based on the zoning ordinance, not a rehabbed building, but a new build in this area since the zoning ordinance and architectural standards went into effect. Surrounding uses and buildings are being redeveloped with buildings located close to the street with the parking behind. Surrounding uses and buildings are not utilizing novelty architecture and are developing with more subtle pedestrian-oriented buildings that lend to a cohesive district as was called out in the Envision Gulf Shores Plan. Surrounding properties are largely redeveloping or planning to be redeveloped in accordance with the zoning ordinance as well as the adopted plans and policies for the area. This is not an image from the Vision 2025 Plan, but I think it kind of sums up a lot of the goals of that plan as it relates to the walking district. But one item, one goal, and that is to create an authentic development within the walking district that will enhance sense of place and quality of life. As I stated before, novelty architecture is used to draw attention to individual businesses. It will not enhance the authenticity or sense of place for the walking district as a whole. Another question in the CUP criteria to be reviewed is, is the proposed use so designed, located, and proposed to be operated that the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protected? So we've spent some time kind of looking at the area and looking at how this parking lot functions and whether it will be safe if the novelty architecture is placed in that location. And we think there are other examples where there are conflicts between automobiles navigating a parking lot and folks that are kind of lingering outside of these structures. So there could be a conflict and a safety issue related to the placement of the novelty architecture in the location that is proposed as well. So staff does recommend, as well as the Planning Commission recommends, denial of the application for the following reasons. It's located in the heart of, in Gulf Shores, and as it's not consistent with the vision that was established through the Envision Gulf Shores and other plans and policies for the city. This current site does not comply with the Architectural Design Guidelines of the Walking District Overlay. The proposed novelty architecture does not contribute to the continuity of development to create a comfortable environment for pedestrians. The proposal is not compatible with the goals and stated future plans of the city to create an authentic sense of place in the beach area. And this was created, novelty architecture was created as a conditional use to ensure that its application is done in the appropriate location in the city. Now, I don't think that I would stand up here and tell you that we would disapprove novelty architecture anywhere because I think that it does have an appropriate place. And based on our review and analysis, one location that novelty architecture would be appropriate is within the amusement theme park district rather than in this location within the city. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Define that. Do we have an amusement and theme park district now?
We do. So the track, the putt-putt up north of the intercoastal. Waterville, I believe, is zoned ATP. So we do, and one of the goals of the ATP district is to create a sense of pageantry. So I think that this novelty architecture fits right in with that zoning district.
Thank you, Lee. Council, any other questions, comments? Anybody?
So this is to give the council the background and understanding that it'll take four, five, six weeks in order to do the notices to schedule a formal public hearing where the applicant and public get to talk.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. So this won't be heard at next week's meeting. This will be a public hearing as it was at Planning Commission where it had to meet public hearing notification requirements. So this will be heard at one of your October meetings. If we can meet notification requirements, one of the early meeting or later in the month, one of the two.
So when will we decide, if we're not gonna vote tonight, we're just gonna have a discussion tonight, we're not gonna come to a conclusion tonight, whether we want you to go ahead and advertise that? Define me that process.
Ask that one more time. I'm not sure.
If we're not, we're not making a decision here. We're giving you input as to whether go ahead and advertise or not. Is that correct? What are you looking for from us tonight?
This is just to inform you about the application that's been submitted. And they do, the last time we spoke with them after the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission recommended nine zero to deny this. And we said, do you want to move forward to council? Do you want to move forward with the public hearing council? And the applicant said yes.
Okay. Anybody in the audience with any questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Doug Anderson. I'm an attorney at Burr Foreman Law Firm in Mobile, represent Marco Destin, the corporate entity that owns Alvin Island. I made the presentation to the Planning Commission back in June. And I'm not gonna go through my whole presentation again, but I just wanted to touch on a few things. When we were at the Planning Commission, it was, I made the comments that this was being analyzed under y'all's zoning ordinance like it's a brand-new development, like it's a vacant piece of land. And it was starting from scratch, setbacks, lighting, landscaping, everything. And it was stated by the staff who did a wonderful job that because of section three point three of your zoning ordinance, that it has to go through that entire site plan analysis. And I'm not gonna read three point three. I know y'all are very aware of it, but there are four criteria in three point three, the site plan review. And I would suggest that we comply or don't violate any of them. The first one must be harmonious with the beach resort character of the community. We're less than two hundred yards from the beach where people fish. And this is a fish that is seventeen feet long and about five feet off the ground. Second, future development not adversely affect the physical, I'm sorry. Future development must not adversely affect the physical infrastructure of the city. No impact whatsoever. Must be compatible with the natural environment. Nothing harmful or negative there. Must not otherwise be harmful to the health, safety morals, general welfare of the residents or visitors. So I don't believe any of those we violate. Then you go into all of the criteria that they went through under three point four for a Conditional Use Permit. And this building's been there for a long time. A couple of years ago, we completed a three-million-dollar renovation. If there are certain things that we're out of compliance with and y'all would like to see us come into compliance with, landscaping, he mentioned, the sign ordinance.
Dumpsters.
Dumpster. That's my third one I wrote down. You know, if y'all approve it with conditions, approve this installation with conditions, I'll make sure my client agrees to that. Well, I can't make them, but you know, I will strongly suggest that y'all offer this up to bring it in more into compliance. It's not incompatible in that area. I mean, y'all know, right next door, you got a shark that's about seventy feet long. Yeah, it's nonconforming, but that shark's gonna be there a long time. I don't see a hurricane blowing that shark away. You got the octopus two doors down, a block down the street, on the east side of the street. You got a fifteen-foot skeleton on a deck right up against, from some restaurant, right up against the street. I'm glad he showed the first picture. It was one of the outdoor display for merchandise. I drove by there this afternoon on the way over here, and that's the first thing that caught my eye. That ain't real attractive. And it's a lot taller than I am. It's about ten feet high. They had inner tubes and rafts in cages. And this would take that place. It'd be a lot more attractive. It's not going to affect anybody's safety. It's gonna have sidewalks leading up to it. And you know, I would ask that y'all carry this forward to a public hearing. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I won't be here next Monday night. That'll be my birthday, so hopefully I'll be out somewhere celebrating. So if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them now.
Counsel, anybody, any questions?
I have one question for Lee. Is the outdoor display, is it in compliance right now or is that out of compliance?
It's, they're permitted two hundred and fifty square feet of outdoor display area there. We measured it last week. It's there at six hundred and sixty square feet of outdoor display area. They got two different locations for outdoor display area.
Okay. So just to, just some feedback. I would not condition any agreement to a PUD change as a negotiation for being in compliance with our regulations. And I would specifically demand that they become in compliance immediately with the waste management, with the outdoor display, with everything that they're in violation.
I understand that. And I'm not saying y'all need to not enforce your rules. At Planning Commission, we had this dialogue. And I made the statement erroneously that when we did a renovation a couple of years ago, that we came into compliance, that it was all permitted. And then I was informed, no, because it was grandfathered in, we were not in compliance with all of the current codes. And I'm saying, if there are some y'all would like to see, I'm not saying, don't enforce anything if it's enforceable. If we're violating the outdoor display because of the excess footage, square footage, I'm not asking for that. I'm just asking, if y'all want more landscaping, a new, he said, we're in violation of the sign ordinance. A new sign to make this corner more attractive. We'd be glad to have that dialogue. That's what I'm saying, to make this corner, which is the corner, more attractive.
You're not currently in violation of the sign ordinance with the shark structure that would put you over your allowance for signage. Now, you did.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
The owner did install a graphic display without a permit a few weeks ago that did put you over the signage, but we've worked in order to get a permit for that and to bring that into compliance.
One thing I will, if we go to a public hearing, I'll go into more depth, but I don't see how this can be considered a sign. It's either novel architecture or it's a sign. And I don't think you can apply two different standards in your zoning ordinance to the same thing. I just, I don't think legally this can be categorized as a sign.
We have a very broad definition of sign, and this does meet that definition of a sign. We've spoken about this, and there is a thirty-day period where if an applicant disagrees with the interpretation of a definition, they can appeal that interpretation to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. That time period has passed. So it's clearly a sign. We can read the definition. But based on our interpretation, it definitely meets a definition of a sign.
That was way before I got involved, so we missed that one.
Counsel, any questions?
Do you have that, the definition of a, how that meets the definition of a sign?
Sure.
I'm just curious.
Very similar to the definition of a Conditional Use Permit.
There are a lot of the signs, but the general sign is any object, device, display, or structure or part thereof situated outdoors or indoors, which is used to advertise, identify, display, direct, or attract attention to an object, person, institution, organization, business, product, service, event, or location by any means, including words, letters, figures, designs, symbols, fixtures, colors, illumination, or projected images.
And under Conditional Use Permit, it talks about, one part of that definition is a structure that draws attention to a building. You know, it's two different standards there. This is, in my opinion, if you look at it overall, this is nothing more than asking to put a statue or a fountain at the front door. Nothing more. It's not a sign.
Counsel, any more questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all very much.
Anybody in the audience have an opinion, want to talk about this, or have a, yes, sir?
Good evening. I noticed that the gentleman said that he's from Mobile. He could take that crap and put it in Mobile. The city of Gulf Shores have been working too darn hard to clean up their city. So why in the world do we need that? Okay, this is why we cannot attract proper development. This is why the quality of life in Gulf Shore is what it is. It's gone down. We trying to improve it. If you look at our airport, it's a disaster around that airport. If you look at our beach, it's a disaster. We cannot attract a proper accommodation because of eyesores. And so there is no need for us to continue down that route when we have been working too hard to clean our city up. So clean it up, and that is not part of cleaning up our city.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else with anything? Lee, thank you. Next item, Andy, you've got a Sloop Restaurant Rezoning Request.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. This is an application to apply the Waterway Village Overlay District to a property that is located at one zero three West Canal Drive. It's currently occupied by the Sloop Restaurant. Couple of location maps on the screen. The Sloop Restaurant is located on the south side of the Intercoastal Waterway. It is directly to the west of the Intercoastal Waterway Bridge. And again, it's on the south side of West Canal Drive. To the north of this property is within the Waterway Village Overlay District. And also the properties to the east are currently within the Waterway Village Overlay District. Couple photographs showing the existing conditions of the Sloop Restaurant. I think all of you are very familiar with this location. I think all of you are very familiar with this location. Little background on this application, in 2012, the City Council amended the zoning ordinance to create the Waterway Village Overlay District Regulations. This application did appear at the July 27, 2021 Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission recommended approval to apply the Waterway Village Overlay District to this property. Something that's a little different about the Waterway Village District Regulations than most of our other regulations within the city. They utilize form-based coding. Form-based coding is a little different from traditional zoning. Traditional zoning focuses on the use of the property. Form-based coding focuses a lot more on the design of the built environment and specifically tries to regulate so that you achieve a specific urban form as opposed to the use of the buildings. A couple, the purposes of the Waterway Village District when it was invented in 2012 is to transform this area of the city into a pedestrian-oriented neighborhood commercial district that serves both the larger residential areas to the east and west side of this property. You've got the east side, which is a large single-family district, and also west of the Waterway Village District is a large single-family residential district. So this district is really trying to promote the, promote it to transform into a commercial area and give those residences some neighborhood uses that they can all go to. Again, form-based coding is a specific way of regulating the built environment. It's a little different than conventional zoning when over that. Future land use plan designates this property as medium-density residential. Medium-density residential uses are usually apartments, condominiums, townhouses, single-family houses, and duplexes on smaller lots. The existing use does not comply with the future land use plan, and a recommendation of this, on this application is to amend the future land use of this property to commercial mixed use so that it does comply with the existing land use and existing zoning of the property. This property is zoned general business. The general business district is intended to provide locations for general service uses such as retail establishments, restaurants, offices, and other general services that provide needed services to the surrounding neighborhoods. The applicant did submit a narrative with this application, and they state three reasons for their request to be included within the Waterway Village Overlay District. They would like to be included in present and future festivals, fundraisers, community events that take place in the district. They also would like to be included in the marketing that the City of Gulf Shores provides for this district, as well as the marketing that is provided by the Gulf Shores Orange Beach Tourism Bureau. And the last reason that they explained in the narrative is they're just very excited about the Waterway Village District and want to be a part of it. Staff analyzes zoning and the use of the property. In terms of zoning, the property again to the east and north of this, of the Sloop is currently within the Waterway Village District. Two, there are several differences between the current BG area and dimensional regulations as opposed to the Waterway Village area and dimensional regulations. For example, the existing BG regulations allow a maximum building height of eight stories and a maximum front yard setback of 40 feet. As opposed to the Waterway Village District, the maximum building height is four stories with a maximum building, or front building setback of five feet. So one thing that this will do if we, if the City Council does approve the expansion of the Waterway Village District Regulations is to create a consistent development pattern on West Canal Drive. You wouldn't have the potential of an eight-story building being across the street or next door to a four-story building, so that this would promote consistency of the development pattern on West Canal Drive. In terms of use, again, Waterway Village District is, encourages the development of two neighborhood downtown areas that serve the needs of the surrounding communities. An implementation opportunity listed in the land use plan is to continue and promote investment partners within the Waterway Village District. And the Sloop furthers this goal of the land use plan by providing a local restaurant that the nearby residences can go out to eat at. And finally, under the recommendation portion, staff recommends the City Council approve the rezoning request to include the Sloop Restaurant property within the Waterway Village District Overlay District and designate it as T5 Neighborhood Commercial. A condition of the rezoning shall be that the property's future land use and the land use plan shall be updated to reflect its current commercial mixed use. And this also requires a public hearing and advertisement, so it is likely to come up in sometime in October for a public hearing in front of the City Council. It will not be scheduled next week. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Andy. Is there anything within this rezoning that would be negative to the properties that are next door to that? I know there's a church one property removed. Is there anything about this change would be negative to them?
No, sir.
Any other questions?
Andy, is the prop, is the property big enough to do anything other than what's there now? Really? Can it go four stories on something?
It would probably be difficult to do a whole lot more than what is there today. One thing that the Waterway Village District, it promotes, reduce, it allows for reduced setbacks, so they probably could expand that use if they could meet all the regulations, but I don't, I don't know that you could do a whole lot more with the property.
Potentially, it couldn't go four stories though, because of the size of the property.
It would, it would probably be difficult. I mean, it's allowed to go four stories, but it'd probably be difficult to meet all the parking regulations and other, other regulations.
Getting it.
But it would be.
Okay.
Counsel, anybody else, any questions, comments? Audience, anybody? Andy, thank you. Next, Adam, Brandon, you got a demolition of unsafe and nuisance property presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Counsel. Hey, David, I come before you to talk about a demolition of property located at 300 Sunrise Drive. Just kind of give you some history back earlier this year. Building Department teamed up with the zoning department, code enforcement, and started looking at all the nuisance properties in the area, not just the properties that we declared unsafe or nuisance, but also weed abatement as well, and started making a list. And about that same time, we've had several residents come in from surrounding areas near the Sunset Drive and brought this one to our attention along with the neighbor's property at 304. So after bringing it to our attention, we did go out to look at the property. Got some pictures here for you. Started doing a damage assessment, looking at it from a viewpoint of, is the building safe? Is it a nuisance? And the county actually does not even assess a value to this structure any longer for tax purposes. It's to that point dilapidated, and you can see the several deficiencies in the building. You can see the back deck and the condition it's in. So on April 8th, I sent a letter to the property owner to notify her that we had declared this property unsafe and nuisance. Ms. Watson actually signed for the, for the paper on April 15th. So after communicating with her via phone, text, we actually met on site to discuss the options on May 19th. And going through the property, I think it's safe to say that we agreed to disagree on several conditions of the structure. But on May 28th, she actually left me a voicemail stating that she would, had demolished the structure, and we were gonna meet on June 4th, and due to unforeseen reasons, I had to go out of town that morning. And I texted a letter to let her know that I couldn't meet with her that day, and then we had some miscommunications. She emailed me on June 28th, and I've got a quote here from that email stating that she'd like to begin tearing down the property after the July 4th holiday and have someone contact me that week to give her the information she needed. So I did, on that very same day, I emailed her a response back to Ms. Watson, and I sent hyperlinks to a lot of the questions that she had. One, the demolition permit, what it takes to have the property demoed. She asked about cutting trees down on her property, so I'd actually attached the tree ordinance that we had passed and Andy Bowers' contact information. She'd asked me about filling the lot with sand, so I gave her information on what you can and can't do in a v-zoned property. And she'd also asked for some records, and I gave her Emily Tidwell's contact information, both phone number and email, and told her, you know, anyone in the office could help her with a demolition permit. It's not something hard to obtain from us. And did not hear back from Ms. Watson at the time, so she had actually requested that have someone else in the office contact her. So I had our senior inspector Lance Jones, he actually reached out to her on July 15th, followed up with an email to let her know that, you know, haven't issued a permit yet, and if there's anything that we could do to help her, we'd be glad to. And I know that he actually followed up with a few phone calls as well, and did not hear back from Ms. Watson until I think received a letter copied to all the council members and the mayor on August 19th. So just, she met with Mr. Griffin this past Friday, and then Lance Jones actually met her on site this morning and kind of discussed her options, let her know, you know, if you plan on building back, this is all the code you gotta meet. If you plan on demolishing the building, this is what you got to do. And Ms. Watson was instructed on Friday of last week and Monday this morning, you know, if she's got a plan to come in to, to present to us, we'd be glad to take a look at it. But we're well outside the 30 days to obtain the permit, well outside the 45 days that she was allowed to appeal. But in doing so, we reached out to seven different, seven different contractors to give us bids on demolishing this structure, and Steiner Services did come back with the lowest amount at $12,000 to demolish and remove all the, everything from this property to clean it up. So with that, I am recommending that the Mayor and Council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Steiner Services to demolish the structure unless, you know, Ms. Watson is able to provide us with a plan, otherwise, and if it's something that we would be willing to review and consider, given the amount of time that we've gone through to get to this point. And I know the residents in that area are eager to see something happen. I know it's, it may be some fault of my own, working with Ms. Watson and the response time, and for that, I apologize. But I do know that we're at a point where something, something needs to be done, and here we are in the heart of hurricane season, and you saw the condition of this structure, and last thing we want is to be more debris. So.
What did she say this morning?
It's my understanding, I don't want to speak for her, but it's my understanding, just talking with Lance, that he presented her with all the paperwork, she did agree that she would demolish the structure, and she left and was supposed to come back with a plan. I have not seen that plan, and I know walking in, I asked Lance if he had received a plan from her, and at that time, walking into this meeting, no, sir, yet not.
And added to that, when I met with her Friday, I said, whatever plan comes to the council, I would strongly suggest that some specific dates and milestones be identified to, so the council can weigh her option versus your option.
Yes, sir. This is not the first time that we've had to destroy a building. How many, how many, how many times have we had to take down a building for this type of purpose that looked like this one?
Mayor, I don't know a specific number, it's several, several. I know after Ivan, we did multiple structures after Ivan, and we're actually working through the process now on several more after damages from Sally.
But this is not uncommon for.
No, sir, not at all.
And you followed the same procedure here that you would normally follow?
Yes, we followed all the same procedures. We met with, you know, the city attorney has guided us through this, and what we'll do is, if the owner does not agree to, and we actually go in and demolish the structure, we'll pay the contractor and send a copy of the invoice to the owner and give her a certain number of days to pay the invoice. And if that's not paid within a lot of time, then a lien can be placed on the property to recoup our funds, anything that we spend on demolishing it.
Thank you, Brandon. Any other, Counsel, any other questions or comments?
Just for clarity, the owner has agreed that the structure should be, will be demolished, and they don't have intention to repair. Is that correct?
She stated that in a voicemail message to me and an email, and it's my understanding that with the conversation she had with Lance Jones this morning.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Counsel? Anybody here to speak to this? Yes, ma'am. Please.
I'm Liba Sanders, I live next door to this property. I was here in April. First thing I want to say is that the building department, Brandon, they have been so, things hadn't gone as quickly as I'd like, but very communicative with all of us. I've talked to Ms. Watson quite a few times too. Her story changes every day. She, she doesn't want to get rid of the place. She thinks, she, she told me she could repair it herself for $80,000, and she wants to retire there. When I moved in, she had not been there in a year to do anything to the property. She came one time after, back in May. She hadn't been back. We have a neighbor who's mowing a lot, so a sweet old man can go down there and fish, but she's not doing anything to the property, and it is just, it's awful, and it's not safe, and it's not healthy, and it's ugly. So I hope that, I'm not sure you can take her word, and that's just my opinion, which doesn't mean a lot, but thank, thank y'all so much.
Tell me again, your name and.
I'm Liba Sanders, and I live right next door at 236 Sunrise. That's where I am.
Thank you. Anybody else, any comments? Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Schwartz, and I live at 234 Sunrise Drive, so I'm two houses away from this property. Ms. Watson also owns another piece of property on Windmill Ridge that has had a window blown out since Nate, and it's boarded up. She's currently residing in this property, a property that does not even have an electric meter to it. So this is kind of her modus operandi. It's not something I think she's gonna take care of on her own, but it is going to be up to the city to have to remedy this situation. I appreciate your help, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Yes, ma'am.
I own the property, and um.
And you are, excuse me?
I'm sorry, I am Gay Watson, Frances Gay Watson. Um, as you know from my communication, I'm slightly frustrated by this process. And we, we apparently got off to a really bad start, but I understood that no one was communicating with me. And so I got more and more frustrated at which time I reached out to Mr. Griffin. I just wanted somebody to talk to me. I actually did write up my plan and sent it to Mr. Jones about an hour before the meeting, and he was supposed to share it with you. I have the tools, the generator, I'll rent a Trac-Ho to take down the building. He can forward you my plan in writing, but I have actually renovated property in the past. As for my property on Windmill Ridge Road, guys, I'm selling two houses. I don't know where Liba got the $80,000 thing. I never threw out $80,000. I'm selling a house in Mobile, I'm selling a house in Escambia County. I'll have about a quarter million dollars to put into my two properties here. I admit, I've put it off. I'm living with solar power, I'm not living without power. I have a solar generator, and that's kind of cool to me. So I, I just wanted to be able to get the permit and get started, and I felt like no one was responding, which is why I got very frustrated. But um, my family actually tore down a house when we were growing up. I've, I've renovated several houses on my own, I have tools, I brought over a generator so I'd have power. I was just waiting for a permit. As far as buildings go, I can handle that, I just never dealt with permits. And so I didn't know what to do, and so I kept waiting and waiting, and, and again, I think we just had some miscommunication, and I got very angry, and I apologize for that, and I do appreciate Mr. Griffin helping me kind of get this back on track, but. But I think Lance and I came up with a pretty good arrangement this morning and I'm ready to get started on it, assuming I can get a permit, which is what I've been trying to do since late June.
Can you give me a thumbnail of your plan and the timeframe and?
Yes, sir. I've actually, in my plan, I've asked you for six weeks, only because I've been here for a month trying to figure this out. I have guardianship over my mom with dementia, so I need to go take care of her, take care of my house in Mobile. And I'll be back over here in about a week. I expect, I want to scavenge what I can from the property. It has tongue and groove wood flooring, I want the wood flooring out of it. There's some really neat weathered wood that I want to use for aesthetics in the new house. So I've asked you for six weeks. I'll leave for a week. I expect it to take about two weeks to scavenge what I want out of it. I have driven heavy equipment, but I'm not a heavy equipment operator. I just thought it was kind of fun to try it. So I've enlisted a neighbor who's going to help me with the track hoe. And so we'll have to work out his off time, but that's why I've given, you know, two weeks for scavenging and an additional two weeks to take it down. I see, I think I'm going to have to rent probably two large dumpsters. See, I didn't even know if that was legal to do that, to, these are the questions I needed answered and why I was getting so frustrated. I want to do this right. I'll be renting two large dumpsters to get rid of the construction waste and it should be done and I've given myself an extra week of leeway there.
So what you're asking for is six more weeks. At the end of six weeks, the house will be gone.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Brandon, what do you think? Is that something that will, you can accommodate and have someone ready to go in six weeks in case it's not done?
It is something that we can look at and discuss. Lance is in here now, do you have that? You've not received the plan? Okay. I would actually like to get that plan in writing first, mayor, and review it and be able to make a recommendation to you Monday meeting.
Did you tell me you gave Lance the plan?
No, sir, I emailed it before three, apparently Lance and I have email issues because he said he sent me an email at some point that I didn't get, which is part of the reason I got very angry.
We're scheduled for next Monday, so we can look at her plan, see, see, and then answer the mayor's question, you know, balance her six weeks asked with what your bid is right now, I guess.
I want to do that and also if I can get Ms. Watson to verify her email with Lance because apparently she hasn't received any of our emails that we've been sending her.
Well, now, I didn't know you sent me one. I, I apologize for that. Seriously, we've had miscommunication and we got off to a very bad start. But Lance and I, we seem to be fine. And seriously, the day I met you, I said, I'm just ready to get started. And that's why I've gotten very frustrated. And so I just want to move forward with this.
If you show up next week with a plan that Brandon recommends that we accept, then I would suggest that we would probably go that way. I can't, I can't speak for everybody, but if you don't, we will immediately proceed forward with having that taken down.
Well, and I, I don't blame you. Yes, sir, I started my first conversation with Brandon by apologizing. I have guardianship over my mom, COVID got out of control and no excuse other than it's my fault, so.
Well, we'll look forward to hearing from you next Monday and hopefully you will, you will bring us something acceptable, maybe we can work this out.
But I would, I would like to comment on that. It's not, not bringing the proposal next week, submitting the proposal before, so our staff has a chance to review it before next week's meeting.
No, sir, I literally sent it an hour.
I just wanted to make sure.
But I will.
But he didn't get it.
I, I know, but I'm saying, I'll show you, we got into this, I'm a former reporter and so I document, document, document. And I'm sure there's a timestamp on the email I sent, I sent it around three today.
I suggest you get with them, make sure you have the email.
Yes, sir, I will.
Or print off a copy and hand deliver it just to make sure. I mean, it's really, I, I, I think it's your responsibility to submit the plan. It's not our responsibility to verify that we receive it by email.
No, sir, I completely.
So I think just submit that plan as soon as possible and we can move forward.
Trust me. Don't make your neighbors continue to wait through this much longer. So, so you're either going to do it or we're going to do it and we'll make that decision getting the information, but we'll have that discussion again next Monday.
Brandon, there should be no trouble her getting any permits, that should go smooth to tear it down?
If you, if you guys agree to the plan next, after next Monday.
I'm sure Brandon wishes he hadn't gone out of town in June because that's when I planned to start. You know, things just got, got away from us.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mark Ackerman, you've got three things for us on, from the engineering department. Thank you folks for coming and I appreciate your patience.
Yes, sir. The, the first one is the approval of a, what I'll call a 50/50 split drainage study for Jack Edwards Airport. And what we have for consideration is approval of a drainage study performed by Barge Design Solutions for various drainage infrastructures surrounding Jack Edwards Airport with associated costs to be split 50/50 between the city and the airport authority. Give you a little background, during Hurricane Sally, several airport buildings did flood and the Gulf Shores Airport Authority received numerous requests from hangar tenants to evaluate the existing drainage systems, determine if improvements are needed in and around the airport. So Scott Fuller, the airport manager, myself, requested a proposal from Barge Design Solutions to perform the evaluation and develop recommendations for any needed stormwater upgrades around the perimeter drainage systems. We attempted, both Scott and myself, through two different means to, to secure some type of hazard mitigation funding, one from FEMA and he, he's tried to secure some from the FAA. Because when you, when you see the, the overall image, I'll show you in a second, the drainage system is actually kind of jointly shared by both the airport and the city of Gulf Shores and because both of us had jurisdiction, neither one of the FAA or the, or FEMA could just grant us a grant for this project. So therefore, we're just, we've got a proposal and we're proposing to split the cost. And this is kind of an overall drainage basin map for the airport drainage system. And if you can see, there's a substantial amount of residential and commercial properties north of County Road Four, including craft farms and all the commercial properties such as Target and Publix and that shopping center that utilize the drainage airport, the perimeter drainage system for the airport is an outfall to the ICW. And then south of County Road Four primarily is the airport property. So it's almost a 50/50 split landmass wise as to what water runs through the drainage systems of the airport. And so within this proposal, we have multiple areas we're going to evaluate. The areas that are blue dash lines are kind of the perimeter ditch systems that run in and around the airport. You can see to the left, center of the picture, those are the flooded hangars from Hurricane Sally. We'll be evaluating the, the culvert systems for the main entrance to the airport as well as two or three culvert systems that are at the outfalls from the airport to the ICW. And then there's also a potential for a new drainage outfall to serve the business and aviation park. In addition to that, we'll be evaluating the, the ditches that are in and around the control tower that's currently under construction as well as the proposed future terminal to make sure that there's adequate capacity in the future for those two projects. So funding for this project will be provided through our unspent monies in the taxable line of credit under the account landed improvements. And the amount we're asking for consideration tonight is $20,375 and that is one half of the total cost of the study. And that would be split with the, the other $20,375 would come from the airport authority and this would be paid to Barge Design Solutions to perform the study. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Mark, go back to your drainage picture, please. Outfall to the east that goes into the canal there.
Yes.
That's not the one I've been talking to you with the core engineers about with all the trees in it. Is that the one?
Yes, that is. That is the, where the dash lines kind of split the, let's see if I can get a cursor on this thing, I can't. Well, where it goes around, that's a dredge spoil site that the core uses. I don't, it goes on the east side and the west side of spoil, so, but that's all within that core drain, that's the course property to maintain, but that is part of that system that you and I have discussed a couple of times.
Okay. So it is vital that we get that cleaned up if we can do something in this project with it, with the core, hopefully.
Okay.
So we're, we're agreeing to split the, the fund with Barge with all the design and evaluation?
Yes.
What, how will the improvements be paid for?
Well, right now, there are a couple of opportunities through the Waterway East project, so as we're going through that project, we would have the opportunity to implement some of the culvert recommendations as part of the, the roadway, because we're going to rebuild the roadway on Waterway East and part of that process was to replace those culverts that are there today. This would give us recommended size, sizes for those culverts for replacement during that project. So that would fund that portion of it. Any improvements on the airport, we'd have to determine, we'd have to find a funding source for any improvements on the airport itself and determine whether it's could be the airport that pays for those or the city that pays for ours or maybe a joint venture. Hopefully there's some grant monies out there that could find that. And I'll work with Dan if there are some grant monies, once we decide on what improvements are needed and where they're located, we can then determine where they could be funded
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I got one more. Is the, I like the better word, a culvert, I guess we'd call it on the old Lorenz property where it's cut out in there, is that adequate?
That's part of the evaluation.
Okay, whether it's going to be adequate or not.
Yes, absolutely. We suspect that that location, as well as the one at Waterway East just due north of that, or two, that and the main entrance into the airport are probably the areas that we need to focus on the most.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else? Anybody in the audience with any questions or comments? Okay, Mark, you got another?
Yes, sir. So this is a bid for citywide drainage maintenance. If you recall, a couple of months, well, about a month ago, we had some residents come in from the east side of town concerned about some drainage maintenance, deferred drainage maintenance and Noel's crews and Public Works have already taken care of those particular issues. But as you're aware, we've had a lot of cleanup work that went all the way through March and April of, of this year from Hurricane Sally. So the crews are definitely being challenged to try to keep up with the amount of maintenance that we've got to catch up on as far as citywide drainage maintenance. So to help supplement the Public Works crews, we let out for bid drainage maintenance contract. And what this will be is a, a crew of people that will come in under contract and help clean ditches, replace culverts that may be failing or collapsed. But it's all the work that Public Works normally does and it will be directed by the Public Works Director and his crews. So give you a little background, we opened bids on September 1st for citywide drainage maintenance. McLeahany Construction was the only conforming bidder with a total bid amount of $417,313. Now, this bid had a multitude of potential drainage maintenance items that could be utilized as part of this contract. But we're going to use this contract on an as needed basis and Noel will be directing the crews as to what he needs them to do and where he needs them to focus on, because he's the most engaged on drainage maintenance. But the actual expenditures for this contract will be based on the services performed per the various unit bids that they've submitted in their bid. The contract amount will be capped by the Public Works operational monies available for drainage maintenance. So Noel's got an annual budget for drainage maintenance and that will be the cap for any monies that are expended, expended on this contract. But the unit bid price for unclassified excavation on this will may seem a little higher than normally unclassified excavation, but in that unclassified excavation, we do have traffic control, vertical control, hauling and disposal and mobilization costs are built into those numbers. Primarily, we're going to use this as a ditch cleaning tool. So we'll be able to send these crews into neighborhoods while Noel's crews are working and they'll be able to clean out ditches and get those ditches restored to their original flow conditions. So funding for this project is included in $150,000 budgeted in Noel's R&amp;M Streets Drainage and Sidewalks account for drainage and, and street maintenance and sidewalk maintenance. And with that, I would recommend that we award this contract to McLeahany Construction in an amount not to exceed $150,000 based upon the unit pricing provided in their sealed bid. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are we allowing for more, for 22 budget to cover?
We can renew the contract.
I was going over that list Noel had this morning. And, you know, there was a bunch of things listed out, which obviously is, it's more than 150 year. Have we upped the budget to take care of that in '22?
Well, we have.
We'll read budget.
Yeah, we'll have to read budget.
Next year.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's an operational line item, so we have X amount left over from this year that will begin this work and then we'll continue that with the normal budget process next year.
Is the $417,000 referenced in, in this memo here, is that the amount it would take to do everything that we've got lined up?
Well, what we had to do was establish unit pricing for pipes, for driveway repairs. So we put a charrette of, of about any kind of drainage repair item and we have to put a quantity. That, essentially that number was only used to select a low bidder. And then the actual contract will be based on whatever funding is available in Noel's budget.
How long will those prices be good for?
We have the option to renew for two additional years.
Does, when you say citywide drainage, does this include cleaning debris out of the ditches?
Yes. Can, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Anybody, anybody in the audience, yes, ma'am? I hate to tell you that I need you to go to the microphone. We've got folks at home that won't be able to hear you and I know you got an important question.
And I tested it, Jan, and you just can't hear people when they're speaking from the city.
My name is Jan Styskow and I'm a resident here. This cleanup that you're speaking of, is that going to entail the larger ditches that are around the city buildings and things like that and around the, the businesses in town or is that strictly going to be residential?
Well, the, there's no designation of where this contract's to take place. It's just unit bid. So any ditches are applicable if, if there's city maintained ditches and we're not going to be doing work on any private properties, but any, any ditches that are in due for maintenance, if Noel deems that that's a good application of this contract, then he could deploy these resources towards that ditch.
Well, I'm just thinking about the one behind the annex buildings by the Hampton and there's one on West Second, this great big by Vulcans building. I mean, there's two or three other big ditches that, you know, the one on Canal that goes out to the intercoastal. I mean, all that stuff has overgrown and I mean, it hasn't been taken care of in years.
And Sally blew.
Yeah, blew all kinds of stuff into, into those ditches now.
That's what this is for, trying to get our ditches cleaned up. And what we've recognized is we don't have the crew, the capacity to do this and the timeframe we want to get it done.
Well, I just, I wanted to just double check. I thought it was all, just going to be all residential.
All of our drainage ditches that, that need that kind of stuff. We know we've got to get this done and this is the quickest way to do it.
Okay.
I knew it was a good question. Anybody else with anything? You got one more, Mark?
I got one more. So this is a materials only bid for traffic signal pole supplies for a proposed traffic signal at East Second Street and Highway 182. We finally received all of our permits from the Department of Transportation for this project and so we're trying to get a jumpstart on the signal pole fabrication and there's about a three to four month lead time on these poles. So we want to go ahead and get the poles out for bid. We did something very similar on the Medical Village where we, we bought the poles in advance of installation. So this, we opened bids on Thursday, August 19th for this project. It, it's located at East Second Street and Highway 182. And the, the only conforming bidder that we received was Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems and they had a total bid amount of $56,800. I went back and checked the bids we got on the Highway 59 poles and this is right in line with that same bid, so I feel like these are really good prices. We hadn't seen much fluctuation in the pole materials cost, which was good. The lead time we did check is about three to four months at this time. And these will be used to put in a brand, a brand new traffic signal to support the beach walking district and resident beach access. So where this would be located at is at the intersection of East Second Street and Highway 182. To the north is Gulf Island Grill and Hooters and then to the south is a resident only beach parking. There will be crosswalks installed as well when we do the final construction project for the signals, once the poles arrive. And that, those sidewalks in the beach walking district will tie into these crosswalks. So we'll have complete connectivity from both pedestrian and vehicular traffic to the beach district and give access to this public beach location. And again, just to remind everybody, this is the resident only beach parking, so kind of give you a reference of where this is located at.
And it'll have a pedestrian operated signal?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Same as that all along Beach Boulevard. Funding for this project is included in $350,000 that's budgeted for Highway 182 improvements in this year's budget. And with that, I'd be glad, well, I am recommending awarding the bid to Southern Lighting and Traffic Systems in an amount not to exceed $56,800. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
How long will it, what, what's the completion time you get?
We're hoping to have everything installed by the end of the year. So we got two signal projects in the beach walking district. We've got this project, and we also had the replacement of the traffic signal that's at Second Avenue. That's where the Sunliner Diner and Shrimp Basket's located at. That one's going to be replaced by a mast arm signal. So we'll have a nice little bookend project for this walking district. And that's scheduled to start on that, and then, next week. All the work on, on the east side is beginning, scheduled to start next week on the beach walking district.
Any questions in the audience, comments?
I have one, Mayor.
Okay, Steve, Steve, go ahead.
Mark, historically, it seems like these projects are much more expensive. And I know that that tax tag and title is going to be more. This seems like a good price for materials. Do you concur?
Yes, the materials, the last time we bid this out, which was close to a year ago, we were right at $50,000. So we've only seen a, about a $6,000 increase in materials costs. And these are aluminum poles, and we know the price of aluminum's gone up substantially. So we're real excited that, we have, we expected this to be a little higher. I was actually budgeting around $75,000 to $80,000 for the materials. So altogether, this will be about a $200,000 intersection when it's completed. The electronics, the controllers, and all the, the wire that'll have to be bored under the ground and pulled from every direction. So a lot more work to come on this, but it's a, it's a good price on the poles.
You got the concrete work, there's a lot more to be done, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Question?
Mark, what are the wind rating on those arms now?
They, 160, I believe, is anything down on the beach. Brandon, is that, and I think that's the wind rating loading on those.
And what about the new EMC poles on Coastal Gateway? What are those going to be?
They, EMC has their standards, and I believe their standards are right in line with whatever the wind, wind loading is. We've never, I don't, my knowledge, I don't think we've ever had an EMC pole blow down. We've had several of them hit by vehicles, but I don't think we've ever had one. We've lost one for, from wind. We had no damage to the mast arms from Sally, other than the blue signs, which are not part of the actual structure. It was an add-on.
Right. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Anybody else, any, anything?
I have a quick question. It's really unrelated to this, but it's traffic, and while you're up here, I'd like to ask it. Have we, I know we're looking at, with the three lanes going south on 59 as we designed that project, there's been a noticeable increase in traffic going west from Clubhouse Drive, turning onto 59, going north, and on, is that 24th by the church and this gas station?
Yeah.
Going across, at the, at the base of the bridge, turning left as well. And I know those lights are pretty short-cycled for left-hand turns. Have we done any investigation or looked into doing two lanes of left-hand traffic turn on those two roads, particularly because traffic gets backed up beyond the streets and onto north-south streets?
We are definitely looking at some intersection improvements on 20th that are part of the, the bill grant work. So 20th definitely, let me confirm, and I'll have that answer for you next week on Clubhouse, to make sure that we're looking at some. Now, we'll say, we are currently evaluating the timing on both of those left turns. We've received multiple complaints about the short duration on those two left turns from some pretty high-ranking people in the city.
Say you braced heck before.
I don't think that happened.
No, no, no.
I didn't put him up to it, Mark. It wasn't me, it was my wife.
Like I said, of the highest ranking.
That's higher ranking.
Higher ranking. But no, and, and y'all, you're right. They are, they are, right now, it seems like they're still on a summer timing. So we're trying to make some adjustments to make them more balanced at this time of the year.
I think a longer-term solution, rather than just changing the timing. If we could get two left-hand turn lanes going onto that, I think it would serve us well year, year-round. So like, like us to consider to look at the possibilities?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
While we're on traffic signals, and I saw Second, now I want to know what you do among West Second on Fort Morgan Road.
We have submitted all of the comments back from Aldott. We, we had submitted our construction plans for approval. They were, we received a multitude of comments on them. We've, we've replied to those, and we're just waiting on the final approval. That project and this project that tonight, as far as the installation, we're bidding, we're going to bid out at the same time. So that's why we're doing materials only now, and then we'll bid out the labor and the remaining materials on this intersection at, on the beach, as well as West Second, and try to install them both at the same time.
And so, the materials for West Second, have those been ordered?
Those are different. Because of the overhead power, we're not going to be able to install mast arms at this time. As time goes by, and if we can work with Power South one day, we hope we can get those, that section of overhead power adjusted, and then we'd have a clear area to do mast arms. But until that happens, then, and they're not subject to the surcharge, because that's Power South that owns that overhead transmission line. So we'll have to do span wire there and for the foreseeable future. And then, once we're able to work something out with Power South long-term, we'll be able to come back and do mast arms at a later date.
Okay. Any other, any other traffic light questions?
Yeah, Tacky, Tacky Jackson, the Big Beach Brewery.
That's also been resubmitted to Aldott. We did meet warrant, and we had some comments back. So both Second Street, West Second Street and 24th, we're running concurrently with Skipper and Associates, and they've been going back and forth with Aldott. So we hope to get approval on both of them to proceed.
That's my pet project over here for the lady on 24th.
You've got, there's several people up here, and that's their pet project. It's, it's definitely needed.
Another high-ranking official there.
Another high-ranking official. But we've had, we have had a challenge with traffic this summer, there's been no doubt, and the need for additional signals. We had, we had two locations that did not previously meet warrant. Because of the summer, we met warrant, so now they're being reconsidered. And so, West Second and 24th are those two locations.
All right, audience, I guess we're through up here. Any other traffic signal issue? Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Delmore, wait and patient.
Don't be nice for me, you never do.
Mayor and Council, the police department's requesting that the mayor be authorized to enter into a contract with a, a company that helps facilitate off-duty employment for police officers. As you probably know, Gulf Shores police officers work a variety of off-duty assignments for private entities, as do most police departments in the United States. We probably do more than most police departments because of our situation. So for instance, officers work at the track. Officers may work directing traffic at a church on Sunday, letting that traffic out, et cetera. And in doing that, we expose ourselves to a degree of liability. And we've, we've found a vendor that will indemnify us as part of this contract at no cost to the city. There's a, there's a add-on to anyone who uses the services of an off-duty Gulf Shores police officer that pays for that indemnification. But it also pays for this company to schedule that off-duty employment. Right now, our special operations division spends an incredible amount of time vetting these requests, scheduling the requests, and handling all that. This company does that and, and takes us out of it, except that any assignment still has to be approved by us and by our policies. I.e., we don't allow officers to work as bouncers or in a capacity where they would be considered to be bouncers or at an alcohol-related facility, where it's primarily alcohol and not just food with incidental alcohol, as an example. So again, we're asking that the council approve the mayor entering into that contract, which has been vetted by the city attorney. And we can, if we're not happy with these services at any point, or you're not, we can get out of this contract with 30 days' notice. So again, that was something the city attorney thought was a good thing. We are also, as part of this, asking that there be a slight modification to the city personnel policy, which is included in your handout materials. And the basic main change from that is that these off-duty assignments would be approved by me or my designee, which in this case is the deputy police chief, for in-city assignments. If there were ever a situation, and there have been a few occasions in the past where we would approve one outside the city limits, then that would take the further approval of the mayor. As it is right now, everything has to go through the mayor, and he gets inundated with these. And if, so we're asking you to trust us with the ones that are within, within the city limits.
Thank you, Chief, any questions?
Chief, is it possible the guys carry their department radios with them so they can have communication to the dispatch?
They're required to. Yeah, they're required to.
Oh, okay.
And, and really, that's a good question, because the officers are in uniform. They have all the equipment required to be a Gulf Shores police officer. And it's like having a mobile reserve, really. If, if they weren't doing these extra-duty assignments, they'd be at a barbecue or something. But if something big were to happen, and this has happened in the past, where we needed those officers, they're already out, they're already equipped, they're already available to come and leave that extra-duty assignment and come to work for us.
Right, the audience, any questions, comments? Thank you, Chief.
Sure.
Josh?
Mayor, City Council, come to you today in reference to a citizen request that we received in reference to a, the golf cart ordinance. Basically, we have gotten a request from the subdivision Aventura asking if they can be added to the current golf cart ordinance. We have several streets in a couple of different subdivisions, and checking to see if we can get those added on to the ordinance. Since this is something that we've talked to, talked about in the past, I wasn't going to name all those streets.
Okay, any questions, Council? If it fits, and y'all approve of it, and then it's, fits in line with our guidelines, then that's a recommendation that we will, you will make to us, and we will react to it.
Go.
I don't think, anybody, no questions? Comments, anybody? Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, sir.
Josh does a real good job with that. In my neighborhood, he sat up on a Saturday morning, had all the residents, they had carts out there. Anyway, good job, Josh.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Grant?
Good afternoon. I've got a repeat event to present next Monday night for approval. This is an application for Doc's Hot Trot for ARC. Dennis Young, who is with the Robert Steele Rotary Foundation, is bringing this cooperative event between Lulu's and the Robert Steele Rotary Foundation to host a 5K and one-mile fun run. The run originates near Lulu's and runs through the Business and Aviation Park, and then ends up back at Lulu's. This is an event that has, sorry, has, has had a actual certified race route done, and that's what you see here for this one-mile fun run and 5K. The organizers are asking of no specific help from the city in any form or fashion, which is great. Lulu's puts on a fine show at their restaurant. The runners run through, roughly 250 to 300 runners, run through the Business and Aviation Park, and end up back at Lulu's for the after-event. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What was the date again?
This is November the 6th. It's a Saturday, November the 6th.
I see it now. Any questions, anybody?
They used to do it on July 4th, that's why it was called Hot Trot. And I was hot doing it.
I've been there, done that. Any, any question, comments from, from anybody? Thank you, Grant. That's the last thing on the agenda. Is anybody here with any questions or comments, or anything to bring before the city? Yes, sir.
You got more? If I could.
You can.
So primarily for those folks that come to our city council meetings, I want to address the screen to the side. Mike Holly and the IT Department, Michael's here today, have worked real hard to produce this type of graphic and this technology. It's a three-box screen that you can see as we're doing city council meetings. We add agenda items and other graphics to the screen. But as people walk into the city council chambers, that big square box is called a QR code. If you take your smartphone, take a picture of that QR code, it immediately pops up an interactive agenda. So the people that are in the audience can take a picture of that, open up the agenda item, watch the agenda as it's progressing, and then click on the agenda item and see all the backup materials that are on the website and that y'all have before you. So it's a really easy, paperless technology. We're trying to kill less trees. You come in, screenshot the QR code, it will automatically pop up the evening's agenda. Click on any of the agenda items, and you'll see all the backup information that your mayor may not have reviewed beforehand on the city's website. We will do this for the planning commission, do this for the city council meetings, and I believe even the school will be able to have access to this technology for the school board meetings. So I just thought it'd be worth mentioning, particularly for the people that are here in the audience that come to the actual meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. Anybody else, anything? Good meeting. Thank y'all for being here. We'll see you Monday night.